Welcome to the Bristol Democratic Candidates Forum. This forum is being cosponsored by the League of Women Voters and the East Bay Newspapers. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots, nonprofit, education and advocacy organization. We conduct voter registration drives and candidate forums like this one. We also study issues, reach consensus positions on those issues, and then lobby to promote those positions. The League is nonpartisan. We never endorse a particular candidate or party. We always welcome new members and volunteers and donors, both men and women. Our cosponsor, the East Bay Newspapers, publishes newspapers throughout the East Bay. Our moderator tonight is Scott Pickering, the editor of the Bristol Phoenix. Thank you, Scott. The Bristol Democratic Primary Contest this year has six candidates who are here tonight, competing for the five seats on the Town Council. The candidates had their names drawn to determine speaking position. The candidates have 30 seconds to introduce themselves. Then the moderator will ask six to eight questions. These questions have been submitted by the public, the candidates themselves, and the cosponsors by email and phone. The first candidate will have one minute to answer the first question. Then each of the other candidates will have one minute to respond to that question. If any candidate wishes to comment further, he or she can raise a hand to be recognized by the moderator. I meant to say that the questions are chosen by the moderator. The candidates will have seven comment or rebuttal times, also called wild cards, of 30 seconds each, which may be used at any time during the forum. The sequence of responses will rotate throughout the evening, so that each candidate will have the opportunity to speak first and to speak last. Each candidate will have up to two minutes for a closing statement. The timing of the forum will be done by League members Joanne DeVoe and Tom Padwa. When a speaker has only 15 seconds left, the timers will hold up a sign. When the time is up, they will raise a stop sign. When the speaker sees that sign, he or she can finish the sentence. But if another sentence is started, he or she chart comment or rebuttal time. In the pool, we keep track of the comments that have been used by each candidate on her chart. Fay Zuckerman is our Zoom recorder, and my name is Trish Sylvester. Now I'll turn the forum over to Scott Pickering, our moderator.
Thank you, Trish, and thank you and welcome to all the candidates that are here. We have not gotten an introduction of the six candidates in the order in which they're going to be speaking. We have Tim Sweeney, Joseph DiMello, Nathan Caloro, Bethany Foster, Aaron Lay, and Adam Ramos. And that's the order in which you're going to do your opening statements. That's also the order in which I will direct the questions. But again, so Mr. Sweeney, you'll get the first question that's asked, but then everyone will have a chance to answer the same question going down in that order. The other thing I'll say, this is my second time doing a Zoom forum, a Zoom debate. I was a little skeptical going into it. But I did one last week, and the format worked great, and it went smoothly. So I'm expecting you all to do the same this week. So there's expectations to fill. Secondly, some of the questions are going to be pointed, and, you know, easy to probably stay on point, and others are going to be wide-ranging. And I, you know, for some of you, a minute may feel like a lifetime, but others, the minute's going to fly by in a nanosecond because there's a lot of content you want to get in. So you think about where you're going to say, be as efficient as possible with your words because the minute can fly by if you have a lot to say. But you do have extra time to use if you choose to. So we're going to start with our opening statements. And I also apologize, I dress casual since I'm sitting in my kitchen. Everyone else dressed up much nicer than I. I apologize for my informality. But the good thing is you don't know I'm actually wearing slippers below. So at least I have a collared shirt on. So we're going to start with Mr. Sweeney, your opening statement. You have 30 seconds to introduce yourself.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Good evening. My name is Timothy Edward Sweeney. I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol, and I graduate of St. Michael's College in Vermont. Currently, I'm working in finance as a project manager and business analyst at IGT. And I've been a member of the Bristol Town Council for the past eight years, serving the last six as vice chair. We have made continuous progress over the past several years and have had many successes of which we can be proud of. I hope to talk about some of them this evening, and I hope to earn your vote in the Democratic primary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMello.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph DiMello, and I'd like to thank League of Women Voters as well as East Bay Newspapers for getting us together on this. My decision was simple, to run for the Bristol Town Council. Served on numerous boards since the early to mid-'90s. I'm here to represent all citizens, represent small business so they can be successful, remain successful, and last but not least, the senior population in Bristol to make sure they do not get slighted.
Thank you. Mr. Caloro.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Caloro. I've been on the Town Council, like Tim, for eight years. That's four terms. Six of those as the chairman. I am very happily married to my wife Jamie, two kids Nate and Emily, both in the public school system. I am in the healthcare field, have been, my goodness, for about 16 years in sales and management for 25. Very proud to be on the Town Council. It's been a tough last couple of years, more specific, the last six months, but I'm still proud to be there. Thank you.
Thank you to the League and East Bay Newspapers. My name is Bethany Sousa Foster. I grew up in Bristol and graduated from Bristol High School. I went to college in Boston and stayed in the Boston area for a few years. And I wanted to come back because I love this town. I raised my daughter here, and she went to Bristol schools. As she got older, I had more time to get involved in my community. I worked on a number of local campaigns this year. I chaired the Town's Charter Review Commission, and now I'm excited about continuing to serve Bristol as a member of the Town Council.
Sorry about that. I had myself on mute for a second. I apologize. Mr. Lay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aaron Lay, and two years ago, I had the honor of being elected to our Town Council. I'm an Army veteran, and I went to college on the GI Bill. Now I'm a professor at URI. I'm a father of a two- and four-year-old. I want to continue serving you because our challenges are immense, and I believe that I will bring a collection of skills, honesty, integrity, and conviction that are valuable to this council in such unprecedented times. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, to East Bay Newspapers, and everyone else who made this forum possible in these challenging circumstances. I also want to thank my fellow candidates for being here. It's really very important that we have these opportunities to show the public and everybody's ideas and give everybody a chance to get to know everyone. I'm Adam Ramos. I'm a lawyer. I graduated from Williams Law School. I've been serving this town in a variety of capacities ever since I got here, including the last four years on the school committee. I want to bring my thoughtful, pragmatic, and collaborative approach to address the challenges we face, and I hope that I can win your vote on September 8th in the forum.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the questions now. Although I could have inserted some of my own questions, I will let have you know that I had about 30 submitted from folks in the community. And so every question I'm asking was written by someone else because I had plenty of good ones to choose from. But if you hear the phrasing of something that doesn't quite sound like me talking about senior citizens or such, it's because it's from somebody else's words as submitted from the public. First question, Mr. Sweeney. We're going to begin with you. It's a one-minute answer. And this is one of those where you've got to think quick and be efficient with your answer because there's a lot you could say. What are the most important issues facing the Bristol Town Council, and how will you deal with them?
Thank you, Scott. Number one is COVID-19. We need to make sure we're keeping our residents safe, number one. Number two, the budget. We need to make sure that we are able to keep everybody able to afford the town, and that goes for seniors and able to move here. And those are their main issues. And I actually think I'm going to throw in schools as well. I think schools are so important to a town, meaning you have good schools and COVID-19 health and a good physical responsibility.
Thank you. Mr. DiMello, same question.
Yes, definitely taxes are one of it. Spending, property taxes are a big thing in Bristol for everyone involved, especially for our senior citizens in town. Also, schools are important. There's a big budget there. And when budget time comes, I think we really need to look more at line items than just one group of a budget. There needs to be more explanation and more definition to see where the money's going. And also, just our services, we're accustomed to as citizens of Bristol, we need to make sure these services stay readily available, whether it be in recycling, trash, snow removal. And to make that possible is to, again, look at budgets and make sure things are funded properly to maintain the services of the town of Bristol looks well.
Thank you. Mr. Caloro.
I think some are worth repeating. Schools, of course. Staying close with the budget is an arduous task, to say the least. My colleagues on the council and those who watch the budget and come to those meetings know how much time that we take. In fact, in this particular budget, how much we tried to shave off so we could fully fund the school system this year. An immense amount of work and sometimes some pain. But we, as the council, believed, and in fact, I'm just going to stop there real quick and say that there is nothing that any of us can do by ourselves. We are five, and it does require at least three votes. This council voted unanimously to approve this budget, and we typically do too. So I would say that focusing on keeping the budget as fiscally responsible as possible, but as Joe also said, making sure that services continue, I would say that is our top priority. And of course, passing correct ordinances to keep our neighbors safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foster.
I too believe that the top issue facing us is recovering from the pandemic, helping our business community recover. I think that the current council did a wonderful job helping out the businesses downtown, allowing them to do outside seating in the sidewalks and in the parking spaces. But that's going to go away come December and January when it gets really cold. And so how do we continue to support our businesses? What can we do for our seniors and our working families if they find themselves unable to work? That's a real issue. Eventually, things will get back to normal, and I believe supporting our business community is important, especially attracting new businesses downtown. And school funding will continue to be a big issue. And as always, the budget is definitely an issue. I can meet that challenge because of my 20 years in finance. So I think those are the issues.
Thank you. Mr. Lay.
Thank you. I think a lot of you have already hit the nail on the head. I think one of our most important issues is by far COVID-19 and how we're going to be responding to that moving forward. I think certainly that plays into a lot of the decisions that we're going to be making for our businesses. Bethany is absolutely right. What are we going to do with our businesses when we can no longer have the outdoor dining? We're going to have to get businesses together so that we can think about these types of issues and make sure that we're accommodating them in certain ways so that they can continue to survive. Taxes, affordability in this town are going to be another big issue. We know that people are losing their incomes. We know that people are going to be taking a hit pretty soon. We know that some of the help from the federal level is starting to dry up a little bit. So one of the things that we're going to have to do is we're going to have to be very mindful about affordability. Lastly, schools. We can't leave our children behind. We have to continue to fund our schools and make sure that our children are getting the education that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. You know, one of the things about going last is that many people have already said a lot of the things that I would otherwise say. But what I would add to all of the very important issues that my fellow candidates have already raised is the importance of realizing that all of these critically important issues are interrelated and that we, as a council and high as a council member, can be focused on understanding how the solution to each issue that we face impacts things in other areas. For example, when we talk about the budget and we're making decisions around funding, we can be intentional in setting our priorities. We know that we need to both focus on where we spend our money and how we spend our money. And as some of my fellow candidates, the issue with affordability, we need to be focused on developing innovative, new ways to approach raising revenue. And we also need to be focused on affordable housing to make sure that those of us who have been in this town for generations or longer are not going to be priced out of our town.
Thank you. You now all have a chance to disagree with anything that anyone just said. I don't expect that in this question, but if you wanted to have more time, you certainly could. Not seeing that, I'll move on to the next question. Mr. DiMello, we're going to start with you. Do you support the East Bay Bike Path extension that's being proposed that would connect from downtown Bristol to the southern end of town near Roger Williams University? And if so, how would you suggest paying for it?
Well, that's the thing. I think it's a great idea. I was looking into that, funny you brought up this question, looking into that today. I think it's a great thing. That would be excellent in Bristol. However, I don't know if the spending right now is the time for anything like that. I think there's a lot of other things we can be thinking about, focusing with states. We have a beautiful East Bay Bike Path right now, and we have the Bike Path in Colt State Park. So it's not like there's a shortage of places to ride a bike in Bristol. I get what they're trying to do through the town. I just think there's spending, and I was looking at some of the pricing. It could be as low as one and a half million, I think to as much as 4.2. I might be incorrect there, but I know it was up there. Obviously, the bigger the path, the greater the cost. I know some money is coming in from that. I just don't think right now might be the opportune time to put taxpayer money into that at this moment.
Mr. Caloro.
So the work that's being done currently is looking at the feasibility of it, so it's a feasibility study. The monies that were used and are being used are completely from DEM, so no Bristol taxpayer, direct Bristol taxpayer dollars are being used to do that. I do believe that more bike paths and more areas for safe walking make a lot of sense. But I do believe that if we have to choose between improving the sidewalks on Hope Street, and it's not just for our senior citizens, but it's a great example of near Chestnut in our Benjamin Church, we need to do a better job there. The state is not doing it. So the town has kind of taken that mantle and is doing those improvements. So if I have to make a choice, I'll go with those sidewalks first. But Bristol is very good at finding grants. If we're able to get a grant as we did for this and have it all covered 100%, my goodness, I'm 100% in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foster.
I am definitely in favor of the Bike Path extension. I'm actually a cyclist and a walker, and I make use of them all the time. I think I've looked at the different options, and I think the least expensive one, the one that's running about a million and a half, is also the one that would expand Thame Street and that would kind of run down Thame Street and turn that into a thoroughfare with a lot of bikes and walkers and I think really benefit the businesses downtown. So that would actually be one of the things that I would want to do in order to help our business community once we've kind of gotten past the COVID pandemic, which I do think will happen eventually. I do believe that we will have to go for grants. I understand that there are other priorities, but that it should definitely be one of our kind of mid-range goals is to actually make that happen and what I think would be great for the business community.
Thank you. Mr. Lay.
I'm really excited about the possibility of this Bike Path. I remember when I was first elected, somebody brought up the prospects of something like this, and we had the opportunity to hear those types of ideas that people want this type of thing. Luckily, we were able to get a design grant to explore the various options that are available to us. I think a Bike Path would be a game changer. I don't think that this is just a Bike Path. I think that this is a way for people to get into town so that they can support our small businesses. It's a way for people to get to our ferry so that they can take a ferry to Newport or Providence. It's a way to get students to safely back and forth from downtown. And it's a way for us to get people to exercise. We should always be trying to promote exercise. I've been to a lot of parts around this country, and some of the best cities are the cities where you see people riding their bikes and people who are being active. And I would be very excited to have the opportunity for this as long as we keep the cost of it down as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. You know, I think that the concept of an expansion of the Bike Path fits very nicely with, I think, a shared value that many of us have, that we want to provide opportunities for safe recreation. We want to provide opportunities for green transportation. We want to provide, as Mr. Lay was just saying, different avenues for people to be able to access parts of our town in a safe and reliable manner. So in concept, I am 100% in support of the expansion of the Bike Path over to Mount Hope Bridge and to provide those types of opportunities and abilities for not only the residents of the town of Bristol, but visitors to the town with access points. The concept of paying for something like that is always going to be a tricky one, but it drives very closely with my core belief around how you approach budgets and budgets are value propositions and priority setting documents. So when it comes time, once we've arrived at something, we'll look at the budget and other things that are priorities at the time, and we'll make a determination. And if we can get grants, all the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that I'm in favor of the Bike Path extension. I think we can get Roger Williams to partner with us with some money. I think we could obviously apply for grants, as many of you have stated, and hopefully the state can come through as well for paying for this. It is in design phase, so we can kind of adjust, you know, maybe what the design cost would be. But the benefits are amazing. I mean, a lot of people that are biking on the Bike Path right now get dumped right where SSDON is, and I see like a bottleneck of people and tourists. This would allow them to go through and funnel through town, so it kind of opens the town up for business as well, bringing tourists in. Also, it's bringing those college students down into the town to, you know, buy and sell. And so I think it's an economic engine there. But I just see a lot of positives with it. Also, there's a huge health benefit to getting people into biking and green energy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on the Bike Path? Yeah, Mr. Lay.
Sorry, there was a couple of other points that I wanted to make, but I ran out of time. And one of those points is that last year, last summer, I was downtown with Connect Greater Newport, and I had asked some of the businesses down there. I said, "What would you think if we actually were able to link Roger Williams University with the downtown area?" And there was a lot of support from the downtown businesses for that. And the other thing to think about is what's going to happen when we're finally able to link that East Bay Bike Path with the Mount Hope Bridge? So the possibilities are pretty exciting to think about, I think.
Great. Anything else? Anyone? All right, we'll move to a new question, starting with Mr. Caloro. Again, this isn't my editorial comment. It's someone else's. "The senior citizen property tax exemption is too low to be helpful for seniors living on a fixed income. Would you support a significant increase in the exemption?"
Significant is, I guess, an interesting way of approaching it. I would say that if you look at this council's actions over the last eight years, we've made some exemptions for our firefighters, our first responders. We're not afraid of doing that. We've also done it for veterans. Now, I think the magic, and I really meant that word, is balance. Balance between people who are working full-time and seniors that are not working anymore. The fixed income makes it very, very difficult. But I also believe that most of the senior citizens that I know would certainly appreciate some savings, but also believe that they're comfortable doing their fair share. They also have given to this community for years upon years. So I think that looking at this as we have with others and taking steps to complete that is appropriate. So yes.
Ms. Foster.
Yeah, I've actually talked to a few seniors who've expressed this, and I looked at how we compare to a number of the towns in the area. And ours, our exemption is significantly lower than a lot of other towns. At the same time, we also have lower taxes than a lot of the other towns. Just look, the ones with the higher exemptions do. So I think that it's something to consider. I am hearing that from a lot of seniors, that they're having trouble staying in their homes, and ours is very low. I do think any time we do raise taxes, we would at the same time have to raise those exemptions. I would not support a raise, an increase to taxes without also increasing those exemptions for our low-income seniors. And I would actually take a look at doing that and bringing it more in line with some of the other towns that are around where we are on their tax base.
Mr. Lay.
Well, I have written down right here in my notes, one of the same things Bethany said, and I think one of the things we do have to do is look at what other communities have been doing and how we compare to the tax exemptions that are given to seniors in other communities. One of the things that we have to realize is that a lot of these seniors are on fixed incomes. They're not getting raises or anything like that. Anytime our taxes go up, then they're starting to worry about the fact that they might have to leave their home. I did talk to some of the staff members at Franklin Court at one time, and we talked about this issue. And they said, "It's almost always better sometimes to have our seniors be able to stay at home, be able to afford to stay at home instead of having to perhaps go to an assisted living center." And so I am very much in support of something like that. Now, the significant, I kind of agree with Chairman here. We have to be a little bit careful. It might be an incremental tax exemption. We might adjust that incrementally, but it's something that's certainly worthy of debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos, you're slowly climbing up the line here, getting to the front, but your opportunity is next.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'm really glad that this issue has been raised in this question. You know, I too have had conversations with a number of folks who have mentioned to me concerns about the tax burden, particularly on seniors with fixed incomes. And while I appreciate the notion that we can focus on raising the senior citizen tax exemption, I think that we can try and go even a little bit more, I don't know if it's in-depth or further. We can be innovative in reimagining the way that we tax, we raise revenue in Bristol by creating modernized, innovative tax structures that recognize that we want to make sure that we have the tax burden that is carried by people in the manner that they can afford to carry it. And there are a number of ways that that happens in other towns, both in Rhode Island and throughout the country. And I would support, as a member of the Town Council, working to develop a new innovative tax structure that doesn't have sort of a one-size-fits-all and allows for us to care for our senior citizens who can least afford it better than we currently have.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to exploring the tax exemption for seniors. I think a big thing that seniors struggle with is utility costs and the growing cost of just staying in their homes and affordable living. So I think we need to make sure that we get, there's a solar panel tax exemption out there that we work with seniors to try to lower their utility costs, to save them money. The best thing we can do is put money back in their pockets, and I think that's what we want to do. Also, help them as far as get efficient, you know, washers and dryers and LED lighting and switching them over. I think that will save them quite a bit of money. But by all means, I mean, about 25% of Bristolians and Bristol folks are over the age of 60, so we definitely need to make sure it's affordable for all.
Thank you. Mr. DiMello.
This is something that, one of my decisions to run was based on this. Just from experience, from seeing what a family member, my mom, goes through. You know, when you're looking at a house that's a value close to $400,000 and you're getting a $380 tax break, and then you're paying another $5.35 or $85 for sewer use fees, it gets kind of expensive. That's been the big thing, is a lot of folks came up to me prior to me even running, just having conversation, and it was talking about And it was talking about how much tax they're paying on their home. Some folks, they lose incomes when, when someone passes away, when their spouse passes away, sometimes their income is cut in half. I'm not saying that we're significant was kind of scary at the beginning, but you know what? Again, I'm one of those, you've got to go through this budget a lot deeper than I think we do now. We look at it pretty well, but I, I really think it needs to be looked at strongly to find the extra money to use for our seniors. Let's keep those people who've paid taxes for years in Bristol, who've educated other people's children as well as their own. Let's keep them here in Bristol.
Thank you. Any more on this topic? Yeah, Adam, go ahead. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. And I just want to add on to some things that Councilman Sweeney was saying regarding the variety of ways. That we can look at how we're supporting our senior citizens, both from a tax relief perspective and from other incentives that we can provide. And I would add on to that, when, if we were, if we have an focus on affordable housing, particularly for seniors. So that we are ensuring that seniors who have lived here for their entire lives and their families lived here before them are not being priced out. Both not only because of taxes, but because of other, because of other ways in which housing is becoming unaffordable, we're going to be more successful.
Thank you. And, and anything else from anyone? Keep in mind collectively, there's six of you, six of you, you each have seven of these free comments too. So we've got 42 of them available to us. We've used two so far. So you're welcome to talk whenever you'd like to. All right, let's move to the next question, which will begin with Ms. Foster. Please share your thoughts on future development in the downtown district.
As I said, I was very excited about the idea of the bike path. I am very happy to see some of the new buildings that were renovated down on Thame Street, such as Baba Sushi and the, and the building next door. I would like to see something done with the Robin Rug facility, especially if we're running the bike path all the way down there. I don't want to take anything that's, I don't want to see anything that's going to kind of change the nature of the downtown area. I would love to bring in more makers and creators similar to like Hot Point Emporium to kind of fill some of the shops that are there. But I think before we go, like a couple of years ago, there was the big, they were going to build the big structure. I think before we do something like that, we need to look at some of our existing structures, like Robin Rug and what to do with that. So, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Way.
I remember two years ago when I was running, and that was the big issue that came up was the building downtown that they were thinking about making. And since that time, we've had some opportunities with development at Mosaic. So there is some real possibilities of having some of that development in other places that might benefit a place like Wood Street. And so while I'm not opposed to any kind of downtown development, what, what I will say about it is that we have to be awfully careful about how it happens. One of the things that I always say about that is that anytime we're looking at changing the nature of any area, we have to measure twice and cut once. Because sometimes when you make that cut, it'll never go back to where it was before. And we do have a lot of tradition in some of these parts of downtown that are, that attract people that are interested in things like ecotourism, biking, exercise, and those types of things.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. And, you know, this question is, I think, one that faces not only Bristol, but many communities. What do you do when you're faced with potential development in an area that has, you know, historic significance and, and is really built on the character of the town? My approach to the sorts of things is that, you know, don't start with, don't start already having an answer. Every, every development opportunity is one that should be approached on its own merits. And we should be evaluating whether it makes sense or it doesn't make sense. And we should be focused on how we can do things that will bring value to the town as opposed to reasons why we can't. So the, the potential for downtown development is, is great. And, but as Mr. Lay said, you know, you do have to be careful about it. There's value to the historic significance of, of the community and the nature and the architect. I'm going to keep going. And, and there's a balance to be drawn. So when we're faced with these types of opportunities, it's important that we bring all of the appropriate people to the table. To talk about the relative benefits and ways and what meet the needs to preserve all the things that we want to preserve. And I'm going to keep going again, because I want to add another, another point. When we talk about downtown development, I think Mr. Lay was, was referencing this to a degree as well. We can't ignore the other areas of our town where there's an opportunity for economic development and business development. There is a great project in the works on Wood Street that's referenced. There are other buildings that are currently vacant in the town where we can explore having incentives for us to be able to develop those. And bring economic prosperity into various parts of the country, parts of this, of the town, not the country. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, I am definitely open to development downtown, but I would definitely want to engage our community. I think a lot of times we, we know, we don't, our, our community has the solutions, right? And when we get our community together, they'll know what happens best. And I think if we gauge our planning board, our zoning board, and I think we also need to bring back the Economic Development Commission as well to overall. And take a look at our town and the downtown and where we're going as part of the comprehensive plan. And making sure that it's going to fit in for the long term. You know, we don't want to be a ghost town. And I think a lot of times we're seeing now a lot of empty storefronts. And that is, we need to make sure that we're moving it far, as far as an e-commerce way. But also recruiting and making sure we're getting the right people for our businesses that are going to thrive. Thank you.
And Mr. D'Amillo.
Development's very interesting, especially when we're talking downtown Bristol. And I also incorporate, you know, obviously Wood Street has a lot of potential. It's actually looking much better and has a lot of potential, especially what's going on in Kaiser. But the big thing with development is, one, we need to keep it in place with what's already there. Buildings need to look similar to the neighborhood. That's one thing. But as far as development, here's another thing we've got to be careful of. Two things, two important things, traffic and parking. Everybody, this town is horrific with traffic. I know the bridge down on Hope Street isn't helping much, but let's face it, Bristol's always busy. So that's the main contributor to see where we need to develop and what to develop. Parking is another one. I think we should look into more areas where we could get more parking downtown. I think that'll help the businesses to continue going. And again, like Tim Sweeney mentioned earlier, the EDC, get that back going. And I really believe with the right people in place, development can happen, but it's got to be smart development.
Mr. Cloro.
Development downtown was the question. One of the large issues that we have in front of us and not just Bristol, but the world is sea level rise. One of the things that the town is continuing to consider is development downtown. What's appropriate? If you talk to planners and long-term planners, they'll tell you that we need to take a look at changing our HTC and our zoning and planning laws. To reflect what's necessary to protect a building in higher floods that all believe are coming. I believe, to answer the question though directly though, I believe that development downtown is very good. I also believe that some, some points were made by some here that we talked about parking. Joe, you mentioned parking. The council authorized buying the parking lot on Stage Street. So, and we continue to lease. Now, notice I'm saying we here, I, I, I'm saying that because it's so difficult to focus just on myself. And yeah, I can put 30 seconds on there if you don't mind. I, I'm focusing on all of us, because I keep saying this is that nothing happens by ourselves. And I want to take a moment to, to thank our boards and commissions. This council is the one, or the council appoints those members. And their hard work, whether it's HTC, planning or zoning, puts those systems in place to make sure that parking is appropriate, to make sure that traffic is appropriate. So those are good points that were there. But we do have some great systems in place, and the council is the one who passes these ordinance. And yes, I'll take another 30 seconds. I'm having fun with this. The council is the one who writes those ordinances and works with the solicitor to make sure that they're appropriate. And this council, this current council and past councils are not afraid of going back on things that we initially thought were correct, making adjustments. So this council has leased properties to make sure that we have parking downtown for businesses. I believe that development downtown in anywhere is appropriate when done correctly. And I have faith and trust in my boards to make sure it does. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ramos.
I just want to highlight and build on a couple of things that both, I believe, Councilman Sweeney and Mr. D'Amillo and Chairperson Caloro said. The first, with respect to the Economic Development Commission, whether it's reconcept. Or any other informal or formal process. I think it's important that we have a body that is focused on integrated planning around economic development, not only in downtown, but throughout the, throughout the, the town. And then I want to highlight and refer to what Mr. Caloro said regarding the sea level rise and issues with climate change. Because that is a significant thing to identify for when you realize that everything is integrated. We have to focus on caring for our environment. Part of the way that we focus on caring for our environment is considering the environmental impacts and the environment and the need around economic development. And how it relates to the way that our community interacts with the environment.
Thank you. Anyone else on downtown development? Okay. So we're going to move to a new question. It's going to begin with Mr. Lay. Question is, how should the town council respond to the effects of COVID-19 moving forward on citizen health, schools, and unemployment?
Sorry, I unmuted myself. Yeah, that's a very good question. It was schools, health, and unemployment. Well, we have to make sure that people are wearing their masks. I've had some people reach out to me and say, wow, I'm kind of downtown. And I've noticed that there isn't a whole lot of people wearing masks and everything like that. And I think part of it is a public education campaign. I think one of the things that we want to do is we want to get the word out that Bristol is the type of town where we want you to come visit. We want you to come here and play. But at the same time, we want you to be mindful of your neighbors and be mindful of public health and everything like that. Schools, that's a tough issue. You know, certainly this is something that's, you know, that the school committee is, is responsible for. But in terms of unemployment, one of the things that we want to do is we want to be as accommodative as possible to our downtown businesses. If they need accommodations in the aftermath of COVID-19, we have to find some way to make business to be done easier by them.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
I'll start with schools, you know, as I'm a current member of the school committee. And as Mr. Lay just indicated, you know, the school committee is responsible for taking care of what happens with the schools. But the way that the town council can be supportive of helping the schools come out of the other end of COVID-19 in a successful way. Is by ensuring that the schools have the funding that they need and are able to provide the support that, for the students. To both recover physically and mentally as they return to school and as they're figuring out how to move forward. When it comes to economics and when it comes to public health, I mean, Mr. Lay is absolutely right. We need to have public education around ensuring that people are taking the necessary precautions. And really, when it comes to, you know, businesses, I think that we as town council can help businesses be prepared for what the economy is going to look like on the other side of COVID-19. Because even when the pandemic passes, the world isn't going to be the same as it was or the pandemic came. And we need to help businesses be prepared for what the new world looks like.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, this is a, this is unprecedented issue we're going through right now with COVID-19. But I mean, we definitely need to follow the state guidelines. I agree, I agree with Councilman Lay as far as the mask, it's a good thing to point out, they've, it's proven that that will drop. As far as schools, teachers and kids' health is number one. And I think right now with the way the situation is, I think remote learning is the best. But those poor students or low-income students I worry about the most because I know they need food. And I know they may not have access to web as well. So I think, you know, having something sort of like a tent or a safe zone for them where they can go to school. I think we can kind of marry the two there. And then finally, just business, I, I think e-commerce is number one. That's, you look at Amazon, we're buying everything online. I go buy people's porches, everything, there's an Amazon box every other door. So I think helping our businesses get to an e-commerce world through maybe Commerce Eye, they would provide new training. I think that would help us come out the other side of COVID stronger. Thank you.
Mr. D'Amillo.
Hey, good question. Moving forward, as far as citizens, schools, or unemployment. I think two out of those three are pretty much more state level than they are town level. Citizens wise, it, it is just keep going if people are wearing masks, someone not wearing masks. But the bottom line is the need to respect everybody in moving forward and as far as gatherings and crowds or whatnot. We can kind of put a, help hold on that. But it's, again, that's all state issues in my opinion, is even with the schools. Yeah, the school committee does run the school, but let's face it, it's our governor. And her people down are the ones who set protocol as to what's going to be going on as far as schools go. And unemployment, unfortunately, I know a lot of folks that got hit with that. And I know a lot of folks that got hit with that, and it's just, is basically riding out the storm. And what a town can do, we can try to help out some businesses that need help or request help. Whether it would be with some payments that they mail to the town for taxes or whatnot. But we should step up and work with the small businesses. Again, I feel the other two are more of a state issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Caloro.
So a lot of focus, as it should be, has been paid to small businesses. The, the town, this council took steps along with the administrator to waive fees for businesses. For outdoor dining, if you go down Stage Street, that was a lot of effort and energy given by the town. Where Jersey barriers are there to keep people safe and give them a, a larger area. If you go down Wood Street with Wood Street Cafe and having that space across the street. That was suggested to the town, to the owner, and, and the town agreed it was appropriate and right. I also think that we often forget about the large businesses that we have in town. They don't typically come to the town for anything. And it's interesting point is that they, and, and I believe in this too, is that they really want the town out of their way. And what I mean by that is they know what to do to take care of their businesses. They want to make sure that the town is making sure that the roads are paved and cleaned, that trash is picked up, and those basics are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foster.
Sorry about that. One of the things that came up when I was talking to people was that the, the, actually the town did meals for seniors for an extended period of time. During the, through July, I would think, for people who were uncomfortable going to the grocery store. And as I see if it come, if it really flares up this winter, we might need to do something similar to that. We might need to provide more support for the food pantry. And we need to think about expanding that to students if they have to, if they can't go to school and they're not getting the one or two meals a day that they normally get in school. So then we have to think about where does the money come out of the budget for doing, for providing that kind of assistance to our, to our families, to our seniors. To our low-income working families who either can't work or are, and you know, can, I, I love the idea of providing a place for people to, to go and work. For students to be able to have Wi-Fi and heat. And so we have to look at doing something like that, because I do think that. I, I do know a lot of students who really struggled with online learning the last time around. And if we have to do that this winter, I think that's one way we can really assist the schools and the working families in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone on this question. Any other, yes, Mr. Way.
All right, I'm unmuting. I thought Bethany made some great points, and I'm going to pivot over back to what Chairman Caloro was talking about. And that's, he was kind of alluding to this idea that we can't forget about some of the other industries that are here in Bristol. Not just the downtown businesses. We have to be thinking about regional economic development, and that's one thing I think that we have to have conversations. We have to be thinking about regional economic development, and that's one thing I think that we have to have conversations about. That's going to be one of the ways that we overcome COVID-19 from an economic development standpoint, because there's going to come a day when we're not going to be getting checks again from the federal government. There's going to come a day where the unemployment checks aren't going to be coming from the federal government anymore. And there's going to be a time where we might actually be alone. So we're going to have to create the conditions that make it possible to experience real economic growth. And so instead of putting a bandage on a gaping wound, we need to really begin to start thinking about this idea of regional economic growth by engaging some of the other towns in the East Bay to talk about how we're going to grow together. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ramos.
Building on what Mr. Lay was just saying, you know, although COVID-19 presents us with, with great challenges, it also presents us with great opportunity. And what we can do is ease on the, on this opportunity to innovate and make changes in our policies and practices and procedures so that whether it's the large businesses that they're referring to, downtown businesses, our landlords, our students, our schools, our, our families, you know, everybody who lives here in Bristol, we can be a beacon to lead the way as we come out of COVID-19 if we are proactive rather than reactive.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lay again.
I'm just going to follow up again on Mr. Ramos's point. This isn't just about regional economic development either. It's how do the schools work into our regional economic development picture? And that's really the big picture. So coming out of COVID-19, I mean, are we going to have CTE programs that allow our students and graduates to compete on this regional economic development level? So I think that there are some real possibilities here, but it's really up to us to start laying out that vision of what it's going to look like.
Thank you. We'll move to another question. Mr. Ramos, you know, just hopefully you're keeping track. You, you took my advice to heart. You've now used six out of your seven optional talking periods. So just keep that in mind. So we'll start with you with this question. Again, written, submitted by the public, not me. The Democratic Party of today is very different than that of just a generation ago. What are your views on the quote progressive movement and the role of government?
I appreciate that question. I believe that the role of government is to care for people. As a Democrat, I believe in the values that are espoused by the Democratic Party in particular, our Democratic Town Committee. I think that the label progressive movement is used pejoratively and is actually not intent, it does not act, people use it pejoratively. You're not, are not understanding what it is that we actually stand for, which is really caring for people, figuring out ways that we can take care of people and make sure that nobody gets left behind. I think that's at the core of what the Democratic Party is, and that has to do with everything from making sure that we're funding public education appropriately to ensuring that we're protecting our environment and promoting renewable energy, to ensuring that our small businesses are able to succeed in ways that are sustainable and don't, and don't unfairly ego others and hurt, and hurt some other group and protecting our seniors. It's a party of caring for people. It's not, and that's really why I stand behind it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, for me, the Democratic Committee and the Democrat Party as a whole really represents beautiful social and supporting health, education, and well-being of our society. They also believe, and I believe, is the economic and supporting locally-based employment in businesses and growing businesses together. And I think most importantly, really it hits home for me is the environment, preserving and restoring our environment and fighting our number one issue, which is climate change. So it is, is the cutting edge and it's staying pivotal and being vigilant, but making sure that we're all working together and staying collaborative.
Thank you. Mr. DiMello.
Yes, one thing that, that kind of, not really scares me, but you look at more nationally on a progressive movement, turn on the news and you're seeing what's happening there every night. What I'm seeing is, and another motivation to run, and a lot of folks got behind me because of this, is, is, you know, we hear, oh, he's so far right, he's so far left, but you look at what's going on so far left in this party. You have two different parties going on right now. You have the way left, turn on the TV, put on Fox, put on CNN, put on whatever, and you'll see what's going on with these. It's like, it's like those folks, they, they want to push the agenda. That's not a popular agenda for most people in the United States. That's my take on it. Does it make them bad people? No, but I think nationally, it's not in a good position. And I'm really seeing, we're seeing it now come statewide and even coming local. So, and as far as, and I'll use my few other seconds. And as far as earlier, someone mentioned, you know, government's here to care for people. I don't think we're here to care for people. We're here to provide services. People can take care of themselves. That's what happened in this country years ago when it first got founded. People took care of themselves. Government is here to set laws and certain standards. That's it. I don't think we should be in the business of caring for people. Should we watch out for people and their goods and services? Absolutely. But caring for people, I just don't fly with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coloro.
Scott, would you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. The Democratic Party of today is very different than that of just a generation ago. What are your views on the quote progressive movement and the role of government?
So I'll start with the role of government and how I kind of equate myself. I'm a Democrat. Only I defined what that means to me. Democrat to me, and, and actually in the role of government are hand in hand. And that is, you cannot be extreme on either side. You need to be comfortable with your own opinion. You need to share your own opinion. It's also your responsibility to help your colleagues see your point of view. But you cannot be so far one side or another that you still can't shake a hand. And I think that people feel that they have to take sides. And a lot of times you don't need to take sides. If you look at how we, and I'm sometimes uncomfortable with this, but I'll say I, run meetings, is that I believe in respect. I believe that I do not perfect with it. I also believe in respect of my colleagues and the respect of the public sharing their point of view. Again, I don't believe I'm perfect at it, but I believe that moderate is the way. And I believe that moderate means, and I'll take 30 seconds, please. I think that this party today is going through those challenges, but I think the Democratic Party allows for those challenges and allows the inclusionary. I would not place myself in the progressive end of thought process, and I think my actions have shown that. But I don't think that's also a complete negative or kind of a negative. I think that there's some wonderful points of view, but like everything, you can take pieces of it and then build your own point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foster.
Thank you. I think this is an interesting question because I actually think it's a false belief that the Democratic Party is currently more liberal than it was a generation ago. I actually think both parties have moved significantly to the right from where they were in the seventies. Frankly, you know, Richard Nixon put the EPA in place, so Republicans used to actually support the environment. I do have to say, my family grew, I grew up in a union family. You know, my, my grandfather was a union rep at Clastone. My father was a union rep at Director Shipyard. Like, the issues that we're fighting for now were the same issues that the unions were fighting for them, and the Democratic Party supported them. So we were fighting for, I'm going to keep going, we were fighting for, you know, better healthcare. We were fighting for workers' rights. We were fighting for all the issues that everyone is now saying is, oh, that is way too far to the left. It's absolutely not. It's back where we were in the sixty, the fifties, the sixties, the seventies. That was the type of lifestyle that, that was what the economy provided for my grandfather, for my parents. They were able to be, they had good jobs, they, they were taken care of, they had pensions, they, you know, they had healthcare. All of that stuff was guaranteed, and we have actually moved so far to the right as a, as a country that we no longer think that those things are, should be provided to people. And I think that's the mistake. So no, I don't apologize for being a progressive. I think it brings us back to where the governor, to where the Democratic Party was back when I was growing up, when my father and my grandfather were part of the Democratic Party.
Thank you. Mr. Lay.
I think Bethany makes some great points. If you look back to the New Deal, when FDR created these major social security programs and Medicaid, Medicare systems, people were saying, wow, what's wrong with the Democratic Party? This Democratic Party is out of control there. These guys are socialists. Then in the 1960s, you had the same thing happening. There was a civil rights era. And people said, well, how in the world could you ever integrate schools? There's these traditional values that we have to be able to uphold at states' rights and, and everything like that. Well, the Democratic Party that I'm part of right now, the Democratic Party under the leadership that we're under right now is the party that I believe is best for working people. And I'm proud to be part of this party right now. And it's going to be up to our generation to stand up for a lot of those same values that were established during the FDR days and during the civil rights period, where people actually stood up to the tough guys and said, no, we're not going to let you take away the social securities or the equal rights or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Ramos.
No, it's my last one, but it's worth it. Ms. Foster and Mr. Lay articulated exactly why I believe that being a part of the Democratic Party today, and if that's labeled progressive, being a progressive, is about caring for people. These are the values that the Democratic Party has fought for to ensure that all American citizens have a fair shot and are, and are not going to be fall through the cracks and get left behind. But I proudly say, not only am I a proud Democrat and a proud progressive, but I proudly say that those values are values that are about caring.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. DiMello.
You know, we're, we're talking about values here and let's talk about a couple of things. One thing is, is who brought up defunding the police? Wasn't Republicans, it wasn't moderate Democrats, it was the progressive movement that brought it up. Who brought up, and it sure as heck wasn't Republicans, and it wasn't most Democrats, abortion? I know that's not a Bristol issue, but where is that coming from? Killing Anderson babies? How many progressives here, right on this screen, up for that? Have a answer to those questions. How do they feel on defunding? How do they feel on abortion? I think those are two items, defunding shouldn't happen and being, being a pro-life, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We're going to move to a new question. We're going to come back around. Mr. Sweeney, you got to go first again. So, and we only have a couple of questions left in the forum, so that's not totally balanced, but you all get an equal chance to speak. Mr. Sweeney, picking up on some comments that were just recently made. As the country is seeing riots in the streets impacting residents, businesses, and community members, what are your views on support for law enforcement?
In Bristol, I have a very strong support for law enforcement. I think we both need, we all need to slow down and take a breath because it's a really good question. I think what happened to George Floyd in Minneapolis was horrific. It all took a little bit of our soul, and we realized that there are some bad apples in law enforcement. But, and there needs to be, and there's systemic racism out there that we need to address. And pivoting back to Bristol, we're extremely lucky in Bristol that we have a police department that has a community-based policing program where they're in the schools. And they just did a leadership camp that was amazing. And they, they are out there every day working with our community. And they, they want, they want to be there for us. And I think it's, it's also important that moving forward, that we put in place some mandatory training as far as de-escalation and some equity and diversity training. I'm going to take 30 seconds for this because I, this is really, really important. So I think we need, we need to take steps forward to move, move forward on that. And the police chief and I have had a discussion, and he has banned chokeholds. And he, he wants to work with the community to do, to work with people of black, black descent or any descent that are in diverse or minority backgrounds and to make sure that we are a community-based police department. So we're extremely lucky.
DiMello.
Yes, let me try to answer the question. It's basically about defunding is what you wanted to know. What, my question is, what is that going to get us? What is that going to get us? The schools need protection. The citizens need protection. How can we, how can anyone just say, we're going to grab X amount of dollars out of this budget and let's open up a social program? I think we have enough social programs out there as it is. There's always room to have and help more folks that need it that way. But a major thing on the progressive end of it is, and it's going down here again. I asked a question earlier, I didn't get a response. Why do these folks on here want to defund police? I haven't heard a good excuse as to why. No one needs a cop until they need a cop. Remember that. We have a great force here in Bristol. We're, we're lucky, we do. And it's, it, to me, it's just, it's unfathomable. Somebody wanting to run for office wants to take away from public safety. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coloro.
Luck was used in two of the responses, and there's an old saying, which is luck where opportunity, luck is where opportunity meets preparedness. Our police department is Kalia accredited. What that means is that's national accreditation. That means that there are systems in place to make sure that, Vice Chair Sweeney mentioned the chokehold, is that that's part of our process, is to make sure that our residents and visitors to the town are safe. To answer the question directly, my actions are very clear in supporting the police department. Last night, I was at the FOP meeting and discussion about support for the police department came up. I speak as, because this question is directed to me, to me solely. I've supported the police department and I will continue to support the police department. In regards to funding for it, we've also supported the police department and will continue to, and we'll do it correctly. And what that means is that if they have efficiencies, and I'll take 30 seconds, if they have efficiencies and we're able to lessen funding that year, then we will. If they don't have efficiencies and they need more money, and that's what they need to run the police department safely, then it's our responsibility to make sure we fund it correctly. But I wouldn't stop there. It's our responsibility to fund all the departments that are under the auspices of the council correctly. Correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foster.
Thank you. I'm going to address the defund the police. My initial reaction to the term defund the police was automatically negative. It's a divisive term. I admit that. You know, but I saw it everywhere, and I actually did some research so that I understood what it meant rather than just having a knee-jerk negative reaction. And from my, I took away from my research that there are a lot of things that the police are called in to handle that they are, that don't require armed, armed officers. You know, for example, there's a member of my family who is dealing with mental health issues, and we have had to call in the police to assist. And they have come and they have been extremely kind and compassionate. I can't say enough about how wonderful they have been to deal with. But there shouldn't have to be an armed officer showing up in a situation like that. Imagine a situation where you called a dispatcher for assistance and they instead sent out trained social workers. And so you, you weren't dealing with an armed officer who isn't trained, who really doesn't know how to diffuse a situation. And the only thing they can do is shift them off to the hospital. I would prefer to see a system, another, I would prefer to look at other models and say, you know, I don't want to defund the police, but let's look at some other models and say, are there ways where we can shift some of the work that the police are doing that they aren't trained to be doing, that you don't need to have armed officers to do? And then you would also shift some of the funding over to, say, a social worker or a therapist group.
Thank you. Mr. Lay.
Well, when I was first elected to the council, I remember when our department lost its accreditation. And I had to do a lot of research on what it meant to be an accredited police force. And one of the things that an accredited police force has in place are a set of policies that will train our police officers in best practices that ensure that we are, we are making the right decisions from a policy standpoint within that police department. So it's an internally, internal system.
So it's an internally, internal system that will produce good outputs for that, for the Bristol Police Department. Now, I looked at some of the other police departments that are having issues. Minneapolis, I looked to see if it was accredited. It's not an accredited police department. And so to circle back, it's really important to note that after we lost that accreditation, we reestablished that accreditation. And those officers did a very, the work that they put into to reestablish that accreditation and have that level of transparency for that department was very important work that they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, and thank you for this question. You know, it really gets, I think, what is it, a core value of, I think, almost anybody, which is that they want to live in a safe community. They want to feel secure and not be endangered. You know, as many have said already, we are fortunate. And it's an intentional fortune that we have a police department that performs adverbly and does its job well. As Ms. Foster said, however, there may very well be that there are things that we could do better if we did differently. I support, I support the notion that we need to fund a police department appropriately, as Chairman Cloro said. But funding it appropriately means funding it to do the things that it should be doing. And then the last point that I want to make is that we should never rest on our laurels and believe that we're already doing the best we can do. We should always be intentional to look at how we are doing things, whether it's with our police department or any other department, and see if there are ways that we can improve it to ensure that we're providing what everybody needs and serving the community equally.
Thank you. Any more comments on this topic? Okay. This is actually our last question for the evening, for your closing remarks. And the question begins with Mr. Demello. How can the town council preserve and promote open space in Bristol?
You know what? That's another good question tonight. It's very important to preserve open space. There is federal monies available for the town to purchase. The town's been doing this for a while now. So I think as far as preserving what we're doing, I think Bristol's on the right, has been on the right track for quite a long time. Improving on it, I don't know which way, I'll be honest with you, I don't think I know a way to improve how to keep open space open. But it all comes down to the same thing. Comes down to government money. You want to have open space, you need money to buy it. I think we need to keep open space. Number one, the town cannot take any more pressure on the traffic, the schools. It's a big picture. You know, everybody says, oh, what are they going to do with Bristol, maybe they should build 10 houses up there. Well, tell you what, you build 10 houses up there, there's 10 more families in school, 10 to 20 more cars on the street. And it just, it just adds to so much pressure on the town. So open space is very important. I think the town's doing a great job with it now. And I think we will be continuing to do that. And I would promise to continue working on open space for the town of Bristol as a council person.
Mr. Cloro.
I'm going to say thank you, Joe. I do believe we are doing a great job. I also think that this has been a great job for a multitude of years and a multitude of councils. We, this council, over the last couple of years, have bought open space and continue to look at the buying the rights for buildings. So that means that the open space stays open. Person still owns it, but it can never be developed upon. And I mentioned earlier that the town does a great job with getting grants. And typically, what we do with that is partner with DEM. They tend to be our best partner with open space to buy those property rights, the building rights to keep those beautiful areas. And you know what I'm talking about. There are, I mean, a great example is the space right next to or across the street from Fatima. And I'm going to go for just a little bit longer here. There's multiple other examples of open space that the town has bought. And that's from the council. It's council, but more specifically, it's the council speaking with the public and having the support by putting bond questions on the ballot. And the town of Bristol, those voters saying, yes, we believe in this too. We want to know that in the future, when our kids' kids are around, that it looks like it does today. That doesn't mean we're against development. It just means that spaces and places that we can keep open, we should. I think Joe made a good point about how it affects economically when development happens, both positively and negatively. And I think we're finding that balance. And I think we need to continue to look for even more. Thank you.
Ms. Foster.
I, again, I also want to state that I think that the current council and past councils has done a remarkable job preserving open space here in Bristol. And it's one of the things that I really love about this town. I have to admit, I, you know, I love exploring Mount Hill Farm and all the different places that we can go and the fact that there's wildlife and, you know, all that stuff. So that will be very important to me. I think that we've done a great job, you know, applying for grants, getting approvals for bonds. I'd like to continue that. So as opportunities arise, as we can, as we can expand that open space in Bristol, I think we should continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Lay.
I think open space, purchasing open space, preserving open space, that's environmentalism 101. That's really getting back to the basics. And I think that we do a really good job here in town in terms of buying open space. I really like the concept of buying these huge spots. But I'd like to even go a little bit further. There's ways that we can encourage homeowners and property owners and people like that to also expand the amount of green space they might have on their properties, on their driveways, if they do permeable driveways and things like that. There's all kinds of ways where we can take all these disaggregated little areas of open space and expand the amount of open space that we have in town, the amount of places where we can have drainage and everything like that. And so not only do I think we're doing a great job in terms of the big point sources of open space that we have, but I think that there's ways that we can get very creative at an individual level to do this kind of thing as well.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you. You know, I think that this is an area where we've all demonstrated that we agree with how you're preserving open space. Just to brief anecdote, my daughter, when she was a few years younger, was asked whether she thought it was a good idea if a particular development was going to happen. And she said, well, that, I think we already have enough buildings and pavement everywhere. So it's something that is sort of inherent in us to understand that that open space is something that's valuable. And it is part and parcel of preserving the environment. We have done a good job with it and we can continue with the collaboration and engagement with the community in order to determine the ways that we can continue on the positive path that we've gone down. We can build on not only that, but some of the other programs that the town has already started when it comes to promoting renewable energy, both through the town's purchase of it and through incentivizing residents and businesses to take advantage of various programs throughout, so that we can ensure that we're preserving the pristine Bristol environment for generations to come.
Mr. Sweeney.
I'm an advocate for open space. And Councilman Cloro, we've worked a long time together. And Councilman Lay, you guys have been like advocates for open space. That's why you guys are so great. And Ramos and Foster and Demello, you guys are, you know, open space is where it's at. It's the backbone of sustainability. It's where we need to be to decrease climate change. And it's what makes Bristol so beautiful and also a healthy community to live in. If you want longevity, you look at communities and they have a lot of open space. Now, we need to continue to increase open space. And I think we need to really look into the half and half of property. I would hate to see that half and half of property ever developed. It belongs to Brown, but we should keep an eye on that to make sure that we can preserve that as open space. And also, Councilman Lay touched on a really important thing that basically using whatever, your lawns. And there's been a lot of talk down in Orlando, Florida. It's been hugely successful. It's called fleet farming. And it's growing, it's growing vegetables in your garden and then working with your neighbors and your community to grow affordable vegetables. And it's gone very, done very, very well. Seniors are involved, everybody's involved, and it brings the community together. So, yeah, anyway, I'm just a big advocate of open space and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to come out against open space?
I dare you, right?
Seeing no objections, I can close. Sorry, I can close the question and answer period. So we're going to move to closing remarks. Mr. Sweeney is going to go first. You, Mr. Sweeney, have a lot of time available to you. You have, would that be five and a half minutes available?
Oh, great. All right, my closing's not that long.
Everyone, and if I want to hit my midnight deadline, as I said, so please be as efficient as possible.
Right.
Right ahead.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the East Bay newspapers, Scott Pickering, for hosting the forum this evening. I wish we were all in person, but I am glad we are being mindful of everybody's health. We don't talk enough about progress and success. And here are some of the achievements. I've been proud to have been part of the town council team that we have achieved. And firstly, has to deal with tax relief. The firefighter's incentive to ensure volunteer fire departments remain strong. Disabled veterans' tax exemption. Detangible tax relief starting in 2021. In the environment arena, acquisition of open space to preserve Bristol's beauty. We continue to improve and reduce our waste by rolling out the automated trash program. Future greening of parking lots, both public and private. Protection of wetlands and drainage improvements. Backyard composting partnership with Clean Ocean Access. Bike path extension is in design, encouraging tourism and environmental transportation. LED lighting has been rolled out to all the town buildings and streetlights, saving significant tax dollars. We are nearing the installation of the solar farm over the old landfill currently in, currently it's in DEM permitting. Additional funds were allocated for roads and sidewalks and infrastructure projects. The new ferry service is available. We updated the planning and zoning ordinance to be more business-friendly. Rezoning the industrial park and updating the manufacturing zone to allow microbreweries. Expanded outside dining for our downtown restaurants, even loosening entertainment licenses a little bit, being a little flexible there. Continued our progress in the Marina expansion. Our parks and recreation departments are thriving with new programs for all ages. And finally, most importantly, we fully funded the Bristol Warren Regional School District. I am committed to continuing the progress to strengthen our community by supporting a welcoming environment, by encouraging cooperation, tolerance, and respect. And by all persons who come in contact with the town of Bristol. So I would like to ask for your continued support September 8th. And I want to thank all, finally, I want to thank all the candidates on here. Takes a lot to put yourself out here and I commend all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. And I actually did my math wrong, so you only had four and a half minutes. So thank you for not using the five and a half and making it look like I was favoring you. Too late. All right, Mr. Demello, you're next. You have up to four minutes.
Great. I don't even think I need that much. First and foremost, thank you for everybody who put this together. Scott, you did a great job, League of Women Voters, East Bay Newspapers, and everyone involved in this. Bottom line, we may not all agree on the same thing, but the bottom line is this, we're all people who love our community. I love Bristol, lived here my whole life, willing to step up and do what it takes at this end. I've served on Bristol County Water Authority, Recreation Board, Conservation Commission, Personnel Board. There might be one or two I probably forgot. I've coached in town, I've done a lot of things in Bristol. Fortunately, my life's in a way now where I'm retired. And all these years of being on these boards and commissions make me want to say, you know what? Or it made me want to say, I want to serve the town of Bristol. I can serve the town of Bristol post due every day. That's a lot to do, you know? But this is something that I've been looking forward to for quite some time. The town of Bristol has a tremendous amount of positives which we have to keep going with. The open spaces being a great part of it, the development we have downtown along the waterfront, the help that the businesses got during this COVID situation with the restaurants, with loosening up the belt a little bit to let them do a little bit more to continue to go. Coming in the winter, though, what's going to happen to these same places? That was a question that was brought up earlier. And that should be something that's already should be worked on. We shouldn't wait till September, October to stop this planning. And I know it's been difficult with Zoom meetings and people not together anymore. So a lot less stuff is getting tackled at that point. But going from there, bottom line is this, I'm looking to serve the people of Bristol with dignity and respect to keep the school department funded the way it is, to make sure these kids get the proper education and to make Bristol School Department, one day, one of the top in the state. That's a big goal that I'd like to see happen. Development going on in Bristol, what I'm seeing now going on on Wood Street, the Brito project over at the old Kaiser complex, it's a beautiful thing. We need to make that area much more useful, make it more, give it eyes, give the area some eyes, which means make it look nice. And it's going to get there. I have, and Wood Street needs to be developed just as much as Daines and Hope have been developed as well. I'm just asking everybody for an opportunity to make it to the town council. You won't be disappointed. That's all I can tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cloro, you have up to three minutes.
So I'm going to start and end the same way. I appreciate the support from the people of Bristol that you've shown me, that you currently show me. And I'm hoping for that support again moving forward. I want to thank a couple of, actually, I want to thank our departments. Often, we talk about the higher visibility ones, but I think the lower visibility ones deserve our thanks. Sewer is a great example of that. I often talk about local government being boring. It should be boring. That doesn't mean it's hidden or in the back. It does mean, though, that, picture this, if you flush your toilet and it doesn't go down, that's not boring. So when it does go down, when things happen normally, when you can drive down the street, when the lights are on, when, as mentioned earlier, with Recreation Department running the way it does, with the planning boards and, well, Planning Department, and then our boards and commissions doing what they do, this doesn't happen by accident. There is so much effort that are put into making this community. And lest we forget our residents, because this community means nothing. It wouldn't happen without their willingness to support by, there's a magic things that happens in the United States where people willingly pay tax because they see the value in what they get from it. And that's our job, is to make sure that we continue to have value. We're so fortunate in Bristol by our residents, by our geography. We're so fortunate in Bristol having a state park and a university. We're also fortunate because of all of us here. And I'm talking about anybody who's willing to put their neck on the line. And this time, it's difficult. It's difficult and you get, you can get down sometimes, but I got to tell you something. I love being on the council. I love representing the community. And I know either you all do or you all will. I think I can speak for all of you on that. I must tell you, this has been a pleasure. I appreciate all the efforts that were given to put this on. And as I said, I will end the way I started, which is I appreciate the support I've gotten that I have. And I hope that you can give it to me in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Foster, you have up to four minutes if you choose.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the East Bay newspaper, Scott Pickering, everyone on the line here who's making this happen and recorded. Thank you very much. I would consider it an honor to serve Bristol as a member of the town council. I'm running to make sure that the government of this town works for everyone, especially working families, our children who are in schools, our seniors. I want to work to continue to make Bristol a great place to live and visit by supporting local businesses and protecting our natural resources. I want to help ensure, I want to ensure that the council continues to foster a welcoming and inclusive community here in Bristol. And I've been speaking my truth all night and I'm going to continue to do so. I do think the government should be in the business of taking care of people. As I noted before, I grew up in Bristol and I went to school here after college and a couple of years in the Boston area. I came back to Bristol because my family is here and I really love this town. I have a bachelor's degree in management with a concentration in accounting from Boston University. I worked in public accounting for a few years, my first few years out of school and earned my CPA. I've worked in corporate accounting ever since the last 22 years in the Controllers Department at Textron. I have a lot of experience with budgets and, you know, that's the type of stuff that kind of gets me a little excited, which makes me geek. But after the 2016 election, I was inspired to get more involved in my community. But after the 2016 election, I was inspired to get more involved in my community. I worked on a few campaigns and chaired the Charter Review Commission this year. We made some great recommendations to the council for items to put on the ballot in November. And I had, and I really appreciated the opportunity to learn more about the town's government structure. That was a great experience. What sets me apart from the, my other opponents, we're all Democrats. So I know I share a lot of the same values with a lot of you, especially Tim, Adam and Aaron and my other opponents. What sets us apart from each other are our life experiences and the different perspectives we bring to the table. There's one, there is one obvious difference. I'm the only woman, um, running in for the Democratic Party this year. I've been a working mother, a single mother, and that brings a perspective with it that maybe other people don't have. I also have a finance background and that, you know, the, that experience sets me apart. That's why I'm asking for your vote this Tuesday, September 8th. I look forward to continuing to serve Bristol on the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Way, uh, you have up to three minutes.
All right, I wanted, uh, I want to thank everybody for putting this on, the League of Women Voters and the East Bay Newspapers. Can we do it again like this next time? I mean, this is, this is great. And I hope that a lot of people will be able to tune in and, and watch this. And I hope that it's, uh, enhanced democracy in, in our elections. So thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We have some critical and consequential choices to make this election year. Our country and even our local governments are at a crossroads. And I think that we need steady, capable and honest leadership more than we ever did before. So, uh, you know, in terms of our council, these past two years, uh, we've had some impressive accomplishments by working together. We, and we increased that disabled veterans tax exemption. That was a big thing. That even helped out a lot of seniors, if you think about it. We fully funded our schools. We got back to the basics in making Bristol greener by acquiring open space and bringing compost in here. It looks like we've even greened up the Gooding Plaza parking lot possibly. I mean, this is something that serves as the entrance to Bristol. It should be green. In many ways, we've accommodated our local businesses to support them. We granted a special use permit for the brewery on Medicom. We've expanded outdoor dining and when downtown businesses came to us to adjust our commercial trash policy, we worked with them. So if we have another COVID flare up, we will have your back and we will have everybody else's back. Yeah, I know that there's still more that we can do and I look forward to building on the accomplishments that we've already made on, on future councils. And if you give me your vote, I will continue to bring my collection of skills to the council. I will continue to work hard for you. I will, I will respect the position. And I will bring real honesty, integrity and conviction to the position. So that's why I'm asking for your vote on September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos, you have two minutes to bring us to a resounding finish.
Well, thank you very much, Scott. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. You know, this has been an amazing forum. Thank you to all of the candidates. You know, it's really just so critical that we have this opportunity for all of the voters to get to know us and make informed choices at the ballot box. And I've said a couple of times over the course of tonight that we're facing a time of great challenge, but with the great challenge comes great opportunity. You know, we can both ensure that Bristol remains the gem that it already is and seize on these opportunities to make that gem shine even brighter. I mentioned a little bit that I'm, uh, a lawyer and I graduated from Roger Williams Law School. And I work every day as a lawyer to build consensus and try and solve problems. People maybe have a view of lawyers as, as, as being contentious and fighters, but we're most successful when we bring people together. And that's something that I do every day. And I'll bring that skillset to the town council to work with leaders to develop integrated and comprehensive solutions. You know, I've been serving this town in a variety of ways ever since I got here, whether it's as a coach or as a member of various nonprofits, uh, or as the vice chair of the school committee. And I know what it takes to do the hard work to bring about, uh, positive change and accomplishments. We're moving that forward. I can bring that to the town council. With innovative ideas for new policies and programs to strengthen our community, protect and celebrate our seniors, preserve our incredible natural resources and ensure that we're educating a future generation of Bristolians who will continue to build them upon the great work that we're already doing here today. So I humbly ask all of you to vote for me and give you the honor of now being able to serve you on the town council. Honor before September 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our forum. Um, we're going to hear from the League of Women Voters in a moment about how, um, how folks can view this and they'll help wrap us up. But I just want to say thank you to all of you. You all did a fantastic job. Seriously, it was very well done. And, um, and I do applaud you all. So thank you for the time and we finished before midnight, which is great.
Thank you all for a very enlightening, interesting evening. Uh, Scott, you're a great moderator. And our candidates, you were, thank you for your very thoughtful participation. It was, it was a really good forum. And thanks to Tom and Joanne for your timing and to Linda for your comment peeping. And for Faye behind the scenes who was doing our recording. This forum will be available, um, for viewing from September 3rd tomorrow through, uh, primary day, September 8th. So go to the league website, which you see on the screen, L W B R I dot org for, to see the, the program or for links for, um, for Facebook and so forth. And any other election information. Uh, next month we will be hosting another forum. So watch for announcements. So most of all to our audience, please vote either now in person at your town hall or at the town hall or on primary day next Tuesday. So thank you all and good evening.